Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for February tenth, two thousand and fifteen. We will begin our meeting with an invocation and pledge. Today's invocation will be presented by Pastor Tony Princeton from First United Lutheran Church in Kennesaw. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Battalion Chief Ron Fagan, who has been with Cobb County since nineteen ninety and is Chief of the Second Battalion. For those that wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, Lord of heaven and earth, we come before you this morning asking your blessings and giving you thanks and praise. For this day and everything in it, we give you thanks. For the opportunity to serve you again, we give you thanks. And Lord, this morning, we ask your blessings upon all those who are serving this community. God, those who are serving and may come in harm's way, keep them safe, bring them home to their families again safely. For all those who bear responsibilities and need to make difficult decisions, important decisions, that impact the lives of all in this community, God bless them with your Holy Spirit of wisdom. And Lord, may all of our work today help to feed the hungry, minister to the poor, house the homeless, comfort the suffering. And may it all be in your service and to your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Princeton, Princeton, and Battalion Fagan. Appreciate you all being here this morning. We'll now call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is Tab One, Community Development. Mr. Johnson, we have one item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is Dana Johnson of Cobb County Community Development. The first item today is a public hearing regarding the code amendments being proposed for the particular year. The purpose of this meeting is not to go over each and every code amendment, but instead to transmit to you the recommendations from the Planning Commission as it relates to the items or the areas of which they can provide recommendations for in the Cobb County Code. Before we do that, I just want to kind of talk about the process in general. Our first public hearing, we held on January twenty seventh. The second official public hearing will be held on February twenty-fourth at the end of this month. That'll be a seven o'clock meeting. After that is done, the Board will be able to make decisions on any of the items that are presented in front of you. At the conclusion of this meeting, the staff will start work on preparing Code Amendment Package Number Two, which is the revisions from the code document that has been provided to you previously. And with that, if there are no questions, I'll go ahead and transmit to you, which I have handed out on each one of your seats, the findings from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of all of the code sections in Section one thirty-four and move them all forward to you for consideration. They did encourage the Board to take a closer look at one thirty-four dash one sixty-eight, the burdensome use code, and they have asked for some additional scrutiny to occur with that particular code. And we've worked with the county attorney's office to obtain some additional legal counsel to take a look at that and assist us to make sure that we're putting together a good package for you to consider. And with the blessing of the District Commissioner who presented this item, we're going to ask this be continued for that legal review to occur.
Blessing?
With the concurrence, that's what I meant to say, sir, excuse me, with the concurrence of the District Commissioner. We are gonna do additional legal review. And with that, sir, if you don't have any questions for me, if you could please open the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Dana at this point? Thank you. So we'll open up the public comment for the code amendments as proposed. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward at this time. Seeing here you're now the public hearing is closed. Our next public hearing, as you indicated, will be on February twenty-fourth at seven p.m. meeting, at which time we'll take these recommendations up for adoption and consideration. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. That takes us to Tab Two, our public comment. Ms. Dance?
There are no speakers.
Thank you. That takes us to Tab Three. Commissioners, I'd like to bring forward a motion to add the following non-agenda item to this agenda for consideration as part of our consent agenda. Tab Three, Item Twenty-Six, to authorize settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Daniel Rogers. Is there a second?
Second.
Is multiple seconds? Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero and meets our requirements for adding to the consent agenda. At this point, I'll bring forward a motion that we approve the consent agenda is revised and authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second? Is there a second? Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And thank you all for moving forward that. Tab Four, Transportation Agency Director De Massimo.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and County Manager, our first item today is to approve a memorandum of agreement with CRP Oakmont Hartman Road LLC for intersection improvements on White Road at Riverside Parkway. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of agreement with CRP Oakmont Hartman Road LLC in a form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the county attorney's office for intersection improvements on White Road at Riverside Parkway.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, motion to approve.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item Two, please.
To approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC for construction of Hicks Road Sidewalk, project number D seven eleven ten, oh, one, seven, one, one, zero. Hicks Road Sidewalk is an approved project in the sidewalks component of the two thousand five SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program, and we request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed four hundred two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars for construction of Hicks Road Sidewalk, project number D seven, one, one, zero.
Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item Three, please.
To approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting for thoroughfare improvements at the intersection of SR three US forty-one Cobb Parkway at Mac Dobbs Road Rutledge Road, the department has received a quick response project request from the Georgia Department of Transportation to add an exclusive left turn lane, a through lane and right turn lane on Mac Dobbs Road at the intersection of SR three US forty-one Cobb Parkway with funding assistance through the local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIC program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed two hundred twenty-seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents for thoroughfare improvements at the intersection of SR three US forty-one Cobb Parkway at Mac Dobbs Road Rutledge Road.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve is read.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item Four, please.
To approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., for thoroughfare improvements at the intersection of SR three US forty-one Cobb Parkway at Watts Drive Pine Mountain Court, the department has received a quick response project request from the Georgia Department of Transportation to add an exclusive left turn lane, a through lane and right turn lane on Pine Mountain Court at the intersection of SR three US forty-one Cobb Parkway with funding assistance through the local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIC program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for thoroughfare improvements at the intersection of SR three US forty-one Cobb Parkway at Watts Drive Pine Mountain Court.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve is read.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item number five, please.
To approve resurfacing contract twenty fifteen dash one, countywide major thoroughfares local maintenance improvement grant with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., for the resurfacing of county maintained streets, project number E ninety-one fifty. Resurfacing is an approved component in the twenty-eleven SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve resurfacing contract twenty fifteen dash one, countywide major thoroughfares local maintenance improvement grant with CW Matthews Contracting in an amount not to exceed nine million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent for the resurfacing of county maintained streets, project number E ninety-one fifty.
Thank you. I'll bring this forward in a form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Massimo, when will these projects, do we have a schedule for the resurfacing projects? Do we?
We do, Commissioner, and I'll get that forwarded to you after the meeting.
It's scheduled as in time? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
For completions, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Number Six, please.
To approve project number E twenty-four fifty dash W-O number oh-nine to the twenty thirteen countywide unit price contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises for drainage system improvements on Liberty Hill Road. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the twenty-eleven SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number E twenty-four fifty dash W-O number oh-nine to the twenty thirteen countywide unit price contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises, Inc., in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars for drainage system improvements on Liberty Hill Road.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question? Yes, there is a comment. Never mind. Go ahead. Five oh. Thank you. Next comment.
To approve change order number one to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., for roadway safety and operational improvements on Queen Mill Road. Queen Mill Road is an approved roadway safety and operational improvements project in the two thousand five SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed one hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars for roadway safety and operational improvements on Queen Mill Road.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item Eight, please.
To approve change order number one final to the contract with Rogers Bridge Company, Inc., for construction of Burnt Hickory Road Bridge over Mud Creek. Burnt Hickory Road over Mud Creek is an approved project in the bridge rehabilitation replacement component of the twenty-eleven SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. The Board of Commissioners, we request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Rogers Bridge Company, Inc., with a savings to the project in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars and fifty-one cents for the construction of Burnt Hickory Road Bridge over Mud Creek.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. This is a revised agenda item to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County and the City of Roswell for the design and construction of a replacement bridge on Willio Road over Willio Creek. This is an approved bridge replacement project in the twenty-sixteen SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. The mayor and the city council of Roswell have already approved an agreement which requires the city to assume responsibility for fifty percent of the cost. As an intergovernmental partnership, this qualifies as a tier-one project. The City of Roswell understands the project will not be initiated until the commencement of the twenty-sixteen SLOSS. If you're familiar with this area, you know that there are trail projects, sidewalk projects on either side of the bridge, and the only place where there is no safe pedestrian crossing is on the bridge itself, and that is the purpose of this project, is to ensure that. The intergovernmental agreement has been reviewed by the county attorney's office. There's a proposed change made to the document under separate cover that will be routed back to Roswell for their concurrence.
Commissioner?
So we request that the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County and the City of Roswell for design and construction of a replacement bridge on Willio Road over Willio Creek and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner, motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing is Commissioner Burrow had asked us to be sure to note, and we are still verifying, but she believes that the bridge itself is completely within District Two, so just as a note.
Well, we need to clarify. Tab Five, Public Services Agency. Mr. Cannon?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners and County Manager. This morning, we have three items. The first item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Tris Gates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents for the construction services related to the installation of a new athletic field irrigation system at Lost Mountain Park. This comes under the twenty-eleven Park SLOSS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid? No, I'm sorry. Commissioner Weatherford?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries five oh. Item Two, please.
The second item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with PE Structures and Associates LLC in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars for the construction services related to the modification and expansion of the maintenance building at Traymore Park. This comes under the twenty-eleven Park SLOSS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item Three, please.
The final item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a change order number one final to the contract with Archometric Design and Construction Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty cents for revised contract amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents for construction services related to building a new restroom structure at Wallace Park. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tab Six, Show Cause Hearing on the Community Development Tab. Morning, Counselor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, Madam County Attorney. We are here today, Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, on the continuation hearing for an establishment known as Enigma located at two thousand Powers Ferry Road, Suite one dash two, Marietta, Georgia, three zero zero six seven. And for the benefit of the licensee and for our new Commissioner, I'm Sam Hensley, Jr., representing the Business License Division of Cobb County. I'm gonna briefly review how we got to this point today, Mr. Chairman, and then we'll go forward with summarizing the issues related to this establishment. As you'll recall, we're here on possible sanctions against both the business registration certificate or the business license, as well as the alcohol license for Enigma. We had originally called this case on December ninth of two thousand and fourteen. At that time, Mr. Hip Nguyen, if I'm pronouncing the name correctly, had requested a continuance because he had retained new counsel to advise him in this matter. That request for continuance was granted subject to certain conditions. Those conditions being that this establishment would remain closed during the pendency of this hearing, except for certain pre-approved, prior-scheduled nonprofit events, at which there was to be no alcohol served, sold, or brought onto the premises by patrons, and that these events had to be pre-approved in writing by the Business License Division. I will note that some of those conditions have been violated since our last hearing, and we'll discuss that in a moment. Since the application was granted back in two thousand and thirteen for the two thousand and fourteen license for Enigma, Mr. Chairman, there's been a multitude of violations that have occurred, violations of the Cobb Code of Ordinances at this establishment. First and foremost, this establishment is registered with the State of Georgia as an LLC, Enigma Lounge LLC. However, its business license with Cobb County is in the name of Mr. Hip Nguyen as a sole proprietor. That in itself is a violation of our Code of Ordinances, and that is false information that was included on the application. But beyond that, and these violations are spelled out in great detail in the charges and specifications, so I will just briefly summarize the nature of some of these violations that have occurred. In general, these include selling alcohol by the package. They have only a pouring license. They do not have a license to sell alcohol by the package. In addition, our evidence will show that Enigma is operating as a nightclub and not a restaurant. There's no evidence that it meets the fifty percent food sales requirement to be a restaurant, and that it is open late hours into the morning, which are not traditional restaurant hours. There's also a multitude of evidence, Mr. Chairman, that this location has created great difficulties in police supervision and also creates disturbances that have required an inordinate amount of police responses. These are multiple incidents of violence that have incurred in the parking lot and on the premises of this establishment. The operation of this business has also served to create a congregation of intoxicated persons, and the licensee has also allowed workers who are required to have valid alcohol work permits to work without such permits, including security personnel and managers. Enigma has also violated the pricing and advertising requirements for alcohol as set out in our code. So this is just a brief summary of the types of violations that have occurred at this establishment. And as a result of the report from the Cobb Police Department Regulatory Services and Permits Unit to the Business License Division, the Business License Division Manager, Sandra Richardson, issued a suspension of the business license on or about December third of two thousand and fourteen under Section seventy-eight forty-five of our Code of Ordinances, which the Business License Division Manager is authorized to do, subject to a hearing by this board, which is why we are here today to review not only that decision to suspend the business license, but also to consider sanctions against the alcohol license as well. Now, I should note that under our code, if the Board were to affirm the Business License Division Manager's suspension of the business license, under our code, that results in an automatic revocation of that business registration certificate. And additionally, the licensee is on notice, of course, that you will be considering these allegations against the alcohol license as well. That is why we are here today directly before the Board of Commissioners, rather than having gone through a license review board hearing, because these matters are stated to be addressed by the Board of Commissioners directly, when you have a suspension of the business license, and also when these types of alcohol license violations occurred, for example, allowing workers without work permits to serve alcohol or to serve in a security or management position. I believe that the licensee is represented by new counsel today, Mr. Chairman. It is not the same attorney that was here previously requesting the continuance, so we'll afford him an opportunity to make an opening statement. They have indicated that they are willing to stipulate to the majority of these charges and specifications, and I know these hearings tend to drag on and on and on, and we're gonna try to avoid that today. I do think it is important for the Board to hear a summary of these violations from the police department, so you have a good background as to what has been occurring, but we will try to keep that as short as possible, since my understanding is that they are, they may contest a couple of these incidents, but there are so many of them that we could concede, I think, the ones that they are challenging and still have a plate full of violations that we're gonna have to consider today. So at this point, with your lead, Mr. Chairman, I will cede the floor to the attorney for the licensee for any opening statement they may have, and then I will be ready to present this case.
Can we just clarify that the attorney is waiving the reading of charges and specification as presented, and that we'll just focus in on those issues of which there is concern?
Good morning. I'm Judd Waits, I'm the attorney for...
Sir, you're gonna have to come. There you go. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Judd Waits, the attorney for Enigma Lounge LLC and Hip Nguyen, and we associate the way, Mr. Commissioner.
The waiving of the reading? Thank you very much.
Sure.
At this time, if you can make some opening statements, that'd be appreciated.
Great. Thank you very much. I guess the best way to present our position on the issues we're hearing today is to summarize them as best I can. This is a business owner, Mr. Nguyen, who's trying to do some good things, employing people, making a living for himself, providing tax dollars to the county. Those are all things that are good and well. Unfortunately, he got in partnership with the wrong people when he was running this business last summer. We have a new management team in place that will steer this boat in the right direction. We have done work in designing new marketing efforts to attract the right crowd and not the wrong crowd. We have additional investors who have provided cash flow that will allow us to get current on the past due alcohol taxes and license fees that are owed. What we are basically asking in summary, and I can get into this in more detail in our closing statement, is that we be given more time to continue steering the boat in the right direction. We've made a lot of progress in doing that, but we just need a little bit more time to do so. What we will be asking the Board to do this morning, when all is said and done, is that you allow us to have a license on your probationary status, so we can open our doors, begin making money again, which will allow us to alleviate a lot of the concerns that the county has. And the alternative, at least continue the suspension to allow us to have more time, if not the probationary status, to allow us to continue the same amount of time that we're asking for, to get current on all the things that we need to get current on. I will save my comments on the specifics after I hear the evidence that will be presented now about the county.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, what I would like to do is to swear in all of the witnesses that may be testifying in this hearing, so we can get that out of the way. If you will be testifying in this hearing, or believe that you will be testifying in this hearing, would you please come forward? I will ask everyone to stand and raise your right hand. We have some officers in the back as well, Mr. Chairman, who may be called upon to testify today.
Thank you.
If you would raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say, "I do." Thank you. You may all be seated. I would like to call in Sandra Richardson, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And just for clarification, as we go through the witnesses, since there's so many, I'm gonna ask the Board if they have questions for each one, as opposed to bringing them back afterwards, so...
Absolutely.
So that the Board would be prepared. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think that will be very helpful, and as I said, we will try to go through as expeditiously as possible, but still get the information that you should hear.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good morning. Could you please state your full name for the record?
I'm Sandra Richardson, the Business License Division Manager for Cobb County.
And how long have you been in that position, Ms. Richardson?
Two years in May.
And can you summarize your duties as the Business License Division Manager, please?
We oversee all the businesses that are in Cobb County for their occupation tax registration, otherwise called a business license, as well as deregulated businesses such as the alcohol taxis, massage, health spas.
And prior to that, how were you employed?
I was employed as administrative assistant to Rob Host, the agency director.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the establishment known as Enigma that is the subject of this hearing today?
Yes, sir.
And did you receive an application for a business license, as well as an alcohol license, from this establishment or from the licensee?
Yes, we did.
Can you summarize the history of that application for us, so we know how we got to this point today?
The application...
Sandra, would you pull the mic down just a second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We had an original application, and it was taken before the License Review Board back in two thousand and thirteen, and after testimony and everything, the License Review Board allowed them to withdraw that application. That was in May of two thousand and thirteen. And then, in...
Do you recall why they withdrew their application at that time?
I believe they were not meeting the criteria of the restaurant.
Okay.
I believe there were some things that they needed to clean up and...
Thank you. I apologize for the interruption.
That was a little bit before my time as the manager. And then in July of thirteen, they applied again, and they applied for a restaurant and lounge at that point.
Okay. And what was the result of that application?
They were approved by the License Review Board in January, on January ninth of two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. And what is the current status of that business registration certificate? I believe you issued a suspension of that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. On December the third, two thousand and fourteen, a letter was sent to Mr. Hip Nguyen, doing business as Enigma, suspending his license... suspending his license based on some information we have received from the police department of the activity that was going on out there, and scheduled for a hearing before the Board of Commissioners in December of 2014.
And as far as the alcohol license goes for this establishment, are they up to date on the liquor-by-the-drink taxes that are payable to the county?
They are not up to date. In fact, citations were issued between the December hearing before the board and our appearance here today. They have not paid August, September, October, November, and December became due January the 20th, I believe it was, and January will become due on February the 20th. So as of February the 20th, if they're not paid, they'll be roughly six months behind.
Okay. And I believe you have the county auditor here to testify to that if necessary, is that correct?
We do have George Smith, the county auditor, who accepts those taxes. One other thing you ask about the application, too, this was a sole proprietor application. It was applied for by Mr. Wynn individually, not in the name of Enigma Lounge. And currently, they do not have a business license, occupation tax certificate, or alcohol license with our office, nor have they applied for the renewal for this year.
Are you aware of the name with the state that this establishment holds an alcohol license with? They're, they're required to have a state license and a county license, correct?
They are.
And what is the name that they filed the application with the state for, do you know?
Let me find that state. Just to make sure that I don't misquote. The state license was, actually has a typo in it, it's H.I.E.D. Wynn on the state license, but it's for Enigma Lounge LLC.
So the license with the county was not applied for in the name of this LLC, is that correct?
That's correct.
Has Mr. Wynn filed an application for a 2015 business license or alcohol license?
No.
When was the due date for that?
All certificates expire December 31st of each year. So as of December 31st, 2014, he was not eligible to serve alcohol anymore because he did not have a current license for 2015.
And if you missed that deadline, if you do not apply for an alcohol license by that deadline, under our code, I believe that results in an automatic revocation of that license, is that correct?
That's correct.
I have no further questions, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Mr. Waits, did I get that right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Ms. Sandra?
Just a couple. I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Richardson, you said that the license had been suspended December 3rd of 2014, is that correct?
That's the date on the letter that was sent to him, yes, sir.
Okay, so as of that date, they were not allowed to serve alcoholic beverages in December, is that correct?
Pending the hearing before the Board of Commissioners, which occurred, I believe it was the 9th.
December 9th. And that suspension is still in place as we sit here today, correct?
That's correct, because it was continued to the February 10th date.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Sandra? Yes, Ms. Kupin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just for clarification, a vote was shared, they were to come before the board due to the police activity which was found on the site, and they were going to come before the board in December, December 9th, and because they didn't renew their license, then it was automatically revoked after that on the 31st.
That's correct, because they did not pay to renew it.
Didn't pay to renew, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner?
Sandra, I just want to clarify that, I mean, it seems like we're going dancing around it, but even though they were suspended, they still had a requirement, like every other business, by December of the, a year, to reapply, pay the fee to get a new license. And it would have immediately been suspended because of your previous actions, but they're still required to keep that current.
That's correct, if they want to remain in business, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
That was what I was asking for clarification for, too, but their business license is what was suspended, or their, I mean, I'm sorry, their alcohol license was suspended, or both, on December 3rd.
Their, we are hereby suspending the occupation tax certificate, business license registration. Certificate for Enigma is set out above, so it was their occupation tax certificate. As part of that, they also have an alcohol license that goes with that. So it suspended business operations until we could have the hearing before the board.
Okay.
If I may clarify, the actual suspension was for the business license, but we set down this hearing for a show cause hearing to determine if sanctions should be levied against the alcohol license. So technically, without a business license, you can't be in business anyway, but legally, the alcohol license was not suspended, it was simply subject to a hearing before this board to determine if a suspension or probation or revocation should be levied against that license. It's a technicality, but that's kind of the posture that we were in.
But even though that was suspended, they still have to apply-
For a business license for the current year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Which one other person?
Just to clarify, you mentioned they haven't paid their taxes for six months, but a couple of those months, they were actually not in operation, is that correct? December, January?
They were not supposed to be in operation.
Okay, all right, so they were issued their business license in January, and by August, so basically, for the six months of the year they've been in business, they haven't paid any taxes.
This is the liquor-by-the-drink tax, that's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
They have not been paying that monthly as they were supposed to be doing, and that started in August.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Sandra? Thank you, Mr. Hemsley.
A couple of follow-up questions, too, that I forgot to ask you about. Now, I believe there were some conditions that were placed on this establishment while they were on voluntary suspension since the continuance that was granted on December 9th, is that correct?
That's correct.
One of those conditions was that they submit in writing a proposal for any nonprofit event that was previously scheduled to be held at this establishment. Did you ever receive any such proposal from the licensee?
Yes, I did, from his attorney at the top.
And did you review those proposals?
Yes, I did.
And did you approve any of those proposals to hold these events?
No, sir, I did not.
And why did you not approve them? Were they deficient in some way? Did they violate the other conditions of the continuance?
The proposal that I received was dated December the 11th from Attorney Ronald Freeman, whose firm represented Mr. Wynn at the December hearing before the board. The first event was, that they presented in this letter format, was a contract, as it appears, for the Enigma Lounge. The management company was John Carter Productions. The event was Toys for Tots Christmas Festival. The date was given only December the 12th, 2014, and there was a $2,500 deposit for the venue. And the venue would provide all food and drinks, and the venue would provide the special tapas menu and happy hour drink specials. According to the minutes of the December 9th hearing before the Board of Commissioners, all the events were, there were supposed to be two previously scheduled nonprofit events. The events were supposed to be held during the daytime hours. This particular document, this contract, if you will, has no hours on it. Though alcohol may be served by this establishment or brought in to the premises by any outside party, it plainly said they would provide a special tapas menu and happy hour drink So tho, those two reasons alone were the reason that I did not approve the first event. And as I said, the letter was dated December the 11th. The event was scheduled for December the 12th. We heard that the event was going forward, and I contacted the attorney who told Mr. Wynn that he was not eligible to have that event because he did not have permission. That's the story on that one. There was another one, a party scheduled for December the 19th. This was a party evidently for a law firm or some other type of firm. It was a five-course lunch menu and smooth music, and had a $1,000 deposit for it. It did not have any hours or times on it, just the date, the December 19th, but it did refer to lunch, that would have been during the daytime hours. The third one that they proposed, but that was not a nonprofit, from what I could tell, it was a lunch for a firm. The third one that was proposed was a venue rental agreement. It was between Enigma, as the venue, and Gate City Management, and it was for the rental of the venue located at 2,000 Powers Ferry Road. In other words, they were, I guess, renting the restaurant or the space. And this particular one was set up for four performances. It was for December the 20th. The setup time was going to be 2:00 to 4:30 in the afternoon. The event time was 5:00 to 8:00 PM, which was at night, which they were not allowed by the minutes to do. And the cleanup was going to be 8:00 to 9:30. This, for this one, there was also, I believe there was also a deposit on this, my eyes are failing me right now, I'm not finding it, but I believe it was another large deposit for rental of this venue. And the fourth one they proposed was for January the 2nd, which was a promoter, upper echelon entertainment group. The promoter would get 100% at the door. The promoter would be in charge of paying security at the event. Most restaurants don't need security. The promoter was to pay $2,500 for the booking fee, and the promoter would be in charge of the DJ, and the promoter would send flyers or promotional material to Mr. Wynn's email address. This did not sound like a nonprofit event to me either. So none of these events were approved by our office.
And did you communicate to Mr. Freeman or anyone else representing the licensee that they were not approved to hold these events?
I did.
And did you receive any information from the Cobb Police Department or anyone else that any of these events were held despite this lack of approval?
There, there was an event held on December the 20th that the police department will bring forth information about.
Okay. And finally, Ms. Richardson, is it your opinion that this establishment operates as a restaurant, or as some other form of establishment under our code?
It does not appear to operate as a restaurant to me, not when you're paying or you're receiving money for somebody to rent your restaurant. It sounds more like an event facility to me, not a restaurant as we normally think of restaurants.
Do you have any evidence from the licensee that they meet the 50% food versus alcohol sales requirement to qualify as a restaurant?
I have affidavits that they are 50/50.
Okay. Have those been audited by the county?
I believe Mr. Smith has looked at those previously, and that also goes in conjunction with the liquor-by-the-drink tax.
Okay. What about the hours of operation of this establishment?
This establishment, when they originally applied, they applied like to open from 9:00 till 2:00 in the morning, but when they came back the second time, you know, when it was, when they, it was, they were allowed to withdraw and then reapply, it was more in keeping with restaurant hours.
Okay. That's all I have, unless-
Thank you. Mr. Waits, do you have any further questions? Thank you. Does the board have any additional questions?
Yes, Chairman.
Ms. Kupin.
Just one more for clarification. I believe when Attorney Hemsley gave his opening, he referred to, or it may have been you, stated that they applied as a restaurant and lounge.
Yes.
What qualifies as a lounge? Is that just anecdotal, or is that, is that, there another provision for a lounge?
Personally, and this is my interpretation of what that, what that meant, to us, it meant that they were applying as a restaurant that would have a possible bar facility for the service of the alcohol license, that, you know, the service of the alcohol that they were getting the license for.
Okay.
So they, he applied as restaurant and lounge as a sole proprietor, though.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I may interject, their state license was issued to an entity known as Enigma Lounge LLC, so that led to the reference as a lounge.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you.
If I could, I think the testimony earlier was that the state license was in the name of Mr. Wynn, misspelled, and also had the name of the Enigma Lounge as well, so it's actually in both names. Just want to make sure that's clear for the record.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Richardson? Thank you. Mr. Hemsley?
I'd like to call Sergeant Bonnie Smith, please. And Sergeant Smith has some handouts, Mr. Chairman, that have been shared with opposing counsel, and we should have enough for everyone to look at. Again, we will try to briefly summarize what is in the charges and specs and what is in these documents, so that you have an understanding of the types of violations that have occurred. Some of this information may be of a crude or vulgar nation, not a nature, not explicit, but there may be some, some crude material in there that we'll try to avoid or skim over if we can. Could you please state your full name for the record?
Bonnie Smith.
And where are you employed, Ms. Smith?
Cobb County Police Department Permits Unit.
And what is your position in that unit?
We regulate businesses that hold alcohol licenses or wish to serve and sell alcohol beverages. We also regulate taxi services, pawn shops, and do most of our operation based on the county ordinances.
And you are the sergeant in that unit, is that correct?
I am.
So you head up that division, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And how long have you been in that position?
Five years.
And have you had an opportunity to review an application by Mr. Hep Wynn, doing business as Enigma or Enigma Lounge LLC, that is the subject of this hearing today?
I have. I've been involved in that process from the onset with the License Review Board and it being ultimately approved.
Okay. In the interest of time, I believe you have a handout that you've passed around, a booklet. Could you briefly go through this and summarize the nature of some of the violations that have apparently come before your unit that led to your recommendation that this license be brought before this board for review?
Yes, just for acclamation to the booklet that I've given to the board. My presentation will start on page 15. I've got a PowerPoint presentation that goes along with it, so if you'd like to flip through as we go, that'd be great. The beginning pages, 1 through 14, are just some legal documents, the charges, specifications, and so forth. The PowerPoint in your booklet is set up with a title to go along with the PowerPoint. The charges and specs, 1 through 20, is what I will be addressing regarding the PowerPoint presentation. We conducted, my unit conducted an inspection at the location on June 26th, based on some information that we had received on some complaints, some flyers, and things that we saw that didn't go in line with some of the ordinances, and believed there were some violations that were occurring at the location. So myself and Detective Argano, along with some other officers, responded to the location to confirm that they were following the ordinances. Based on that inspection, we ultimately ended up issuing 13 citations that evening. We got there approximately 2,200 hours. There wasn't a whole lot of folks in the business at the time. Actually, there were about four or five patrons in there at the moment, but the longer we were there, the more people started coming in. But we were able to conduct a permits inspection. We were able to determine that there were two patrons sitting at the location at a table that was not conducive for dining. It was a lounge-type seating with a small, short table in front of them, and they had a full bottle of charroque vodka in front of them with what they call mixers, orange juice, cranberry juice. So there was a full bottle sitting with two patrons, which is obvious violation of what they call bottle service, which is not allowed by our ordinance. We talked to the patrons at that location at that time, and they said they had paid the bar $175 for that bottle.
the bar $175 for that bottle, um, which again, you cannot do. So we continued our inspection. And again, we ultimately ended up issuing, there were 13 citations. Um, we ended up doing two citations regarding that full package of, of Chirac vodka. Um, we ultimately ended up with one citation for pricing of the, the bottle at $175. One citation was issued to Mr. Nguyen for allowing unpermitted employees that didn't have alcohol service permits. We issued three citations for servers who didn't have alcohol service permits. Two citations for managers that were required to have service permits, and they did not. We ended up with four citations to other employees, um, that are required. We had two security officers, a lady at the door, considered the door lady who was collecting the fee to come into the location. There was a $10 cover charge to get into the establishment. And then a DJ that were all required by the ordinance to have, um, an alcohol service permit, um, and they did not. So 13 at that time. And then as we were beginning to leave the location, um, we had some crowd beginning to come into the, the breezeway area, and they were all lining up at the door. Um, there's some of the flyers that you're seeing up here now are just some of the, the flyers showing the $100 bottle service. Their hours were listed from 10:00 AM or 10:00 PM to 3:00 AM. Uh, $99 bottle of Chirac VIP booths. None of this is conducive to a restaurant atmosphere.
Did you see any food service at all going on at this time?
I did. The slide you're looking at now is, um, the two patrons that I referred to that had the bottle of Chirac vodka with them. There's this, uh, two plates that appeared to be consumed wings. Um, they were doing wing specials that night. Um, everything that we saw was just wings, um, celery, ranch dress. And we did an inspection in the kitchen. There were, um, what we consider bar food. Um, there's some photographs you'll see in a few minutes that we took while we were onsite, and it was, uh, frozen, uh, cheese sticks, uh, frozen coconut shrimp, things like that, that you could deep fry quickly and get out to what we consider appetizer bar food. Is all that we were witnessing being, uh, prepared that night. This is some of the crowd that was gathering. Um, the officer there was not working at that location, he was with us. Um, but this was some of the crowd that was gathering as we were concluding our inspection. And again, they were lining up at the door to pay their fee of $10 door cover charge to get in the establishment. Go on to the next slide, please, sir. Um, this is a dark photo, I apologize for that. Um, but there is, uh, the ATM machine there in the center of the photo, just to the right of that, there's a gentleman in a red hat, uh, and right in front of him is a security officer who is patting him down as he's coming through the door, um, presuming for weapons, um, or, or to make sure he's not bringing anything that he shouldn't have, uh, again, into what I consider a nightclub, not a restaurant. Okay. Um, and once we concluded the inspection that night, we continued some investigation, um, as to some of the flyers, some of the advertisements, some of the promotions that were, uh, being seen via, uh, social media. And we were able to establish, um, three more violations, um, that didn't go in line with the ordinances. Um, we use, uh, in 6-236, C1, C8, and D, all, uh, relate to advertising and you can't advertise for free beer, you can't give away free alcoholic beverages, and you can't promote anything that would violate the county ordinance. Um, so on July 16th, um, we had Mr. Nguyen come to our office, um, and we gave him three additional citations, uh, based on those advertisements and the violations of those ordinance. So he received a total of, there was a total of 16 citations related to the inspection. Further stating the fact that they're, I don't believe are operating by definition as a restaurant, um, as they applied, the definition of a restaurant is to keep, uh, or kept, used, maintained, advertised, and held out to the public as where meals are served and where meals are actually and regularly prepared and served. Again, we didn't see any evidence of that that night. Um, they do have a full kitchen. Uh, the establishment is equipped to do that. We've just found no evidence that that's been done. There has been no advertisements that we have seen that say that they're a working restaurant. They're not advertising anything but, uh, bottles of Chirac for $99, um, uh, and special drinks and free alcohol. The only advertisements I'm seeing, uh, at that time, uh, was all related to alcohol and entertainment. So it doesn't go along with the definition provided by the code. Again, but this is, um, some photographs that we took that night on the 26th of, uh, July of June 2014. It was a stand-up freezer. Again, all it's just frozen bar food that can be dropped into a deep fryer, uh, and quickly, uh, served to the, uh, patron, if that's what they're, they're wanting. Um, this is their inside freezer. It's two pictures, two different angles. The left one, again, is just, um, what we saw in their stock, their stockroom, and it's alcohol. We had onions, potatoes, and carrots, and some bottled water, and a few other lois and ins, but there was no, uh, nothing indicated that you could buy a full meal at this location during our inspection. The next one, again, is their, uh, a small chest freezer that they had onsite, uh, mozzarella sticks, a little bit of frozen food. And then the one on the right is the chicken wings that were sitting on the counter in the kitchen the night we did our inspection.
And as we go through these photographs, we're not going to see anything of an explicit nature or, or just so we have fair warning for anybody that may be watching this telecast?
There is one in here that, um, it, it's not nudity.
Okay.
But there is one that, um, that is a little bit explicit as far as...
Chairman, I don't know if you want to have us pull that slide or... I, I think we're getting the gist of what's going on without getting too deep into...
You don't need to see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let, just avoid that if you can.
Okay.
Glad, I'm... Thanks for the question. The evidence has been answered, so let's, yes, move on.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
On those pictures, since, um, all the board members have pictures here, I just, I'm not sure, unless, Mr. Chairman, you think otherwise, I don't think we need to see any of the pictures. So that we don't have to, by chance, show that picture.
I agree.
Are you okay with that?
Okay.
And I apologize for answering the question that I asked.
No, that's fine.
So I mean, Sergeant Smith, I'm fine with us just having, if the other counsel is okay, um, we're just using the pictures in the book.
No, that's fine. Let me, um, I'm just trying to know where I'm at in my slides here. I think that probably would be the conclusion out of the presence of slides. Let me just make sure and catch up with you. Okay. That's, it's fine with me. Um, so do you want me to tell you and talk about the pictures that are here and just not throw them on the screen? Is that what I understand you're saying?
Um, how about we just do a characterization of what the pictures, what you, why you have them in here? We don't need to go through every single picture.
Sure.
Just kind of give us a rough idea of what message you're trying to give to us.
Absolutely. Okay. Um, starting on page 57, um, it was a slide just telling you that the following, uh, pictures were going to be from their Facebook, their Instagram, their social media sites, um, that they are advertising their type of establishment. This is what they're portraying to the public is their, their advertising for their establishment. Uh, page, uh, page 59, uh, showing dance floor with patrons dancing. Page 60, same thing. Uh, 61 is one of their servers. Uh, 62 is an advertisement for an event that they were going to hold, uh, on November 1st. Off the Block Entertainment was one of the promoters as well as Point Blank Entertainment. And then the following slides, you'll see in the bottom-left corner of each of the photographs, that was the entertainment or promoter taking pictures of the event that was held on November 1st. Again, this is what they're doing inside their establishment. They're documenting their events, not, not the police department. And that continues, I believe, through page 68. The following slides, again, are just what they're doing inside the establishment, the type of establishment that they're putting out there. Beginning on page 72 is crowds that are outside the establishment, lining up at the door to get in on different events, different nights. I don't, I don't see anything in here that, um, even the best established restaurants typically don't have that kind of way to get in.
So in the interest of time, again, without denying the board the chance to ask any questions, would it be fair to say then that these photographs are indicating to you that this is being operated as a nightclub instead of a restaurant?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, unless the board has a different preference, could we move along then to any other incidents that you are aware of or that were reported to you that have occurred at this establishment that would be violations of our code of ordinances?
Um, yes. Going on to, um, address, uh, charges and specs number three, um, we conducted, again, prior to the 26th, on June 12th of 2014, we conducted an investigation with Detective Argano and I, and we went to the location to determine if they were, in fact, a restaurant that opened during lunchtime hours as they applied for. And, um, the business is difficult to see, the doors are difficult to see, the layout, they're in a, in a breezeway area, you can't see it from the street. Um, so it gives us, the police department, uh, a hard time doing any type of surveillance or any type of, um, uh, response to the location. You can't see, it's very, very difficult to see the location. Um, and again, those pictures are in the next couple of slides. Uh, they were not open that day. Um, we didn't find anything open during lunchtime hours. The restaurant was not operating, again, leading us to believe that that's not what they intended to do on that day. They weren't open. We had several officers later respond to the location in, uh, page 89, charge and specs number four. There were several officers that responded, uh, one in October. There were, there was a domestic dispute in the parking lot. While they were investigating that, they determined that there were shots fired in the parking lot. Their officers are here to testify to that. Um, additionally, on the 23rd of November, officers were called to the location. Again, you'll hear from the officers regarding that incident. We've had several different instances that occurred after our inspection. The police reports are listed in the booklet as well.
Sergeant, just a moment. Can I ask you some questions?
I just, so that we don't lose track of, um, on page 89, where you talked about the incident on October 19th, and then additionally on November 23rd, what was the time of day?
Those are on morning watch hours. Precinct 3 works from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So they occur on morning watch.
We don't have the specific time.
I do. Um, the reports are listed on the next couple of pages. Um, one was 2:45 AM.
Okay.
Uh, the other one, another officer the same night wrote another report, uh, on 3:13, uh, or 3, 3:13 AM. And then on 11:23, 2014, uh, they were there at 2:38 AM.
And well, and you probably said it earlier, what was the hours of operations that, um, the establishment was open?
I believe they applied for, um, I don't know, um, it was 9:08, 9:00 PM, or they were, I'm sorry, the second time when they withdrew and then reapplied, it was normal. I would have to look back, but it was normal restaurant hours, but...
Okay. So the business license was issued on the basis of being opened as early as 9:00 PM?
I would have to look back and, and verify that.
Okay.
Would you like Ms. Richardson to verify that for you?
And, um, you can just continue if you want and just...
Okay.
She finds it.
Very good. Thank you, sir. If you would continue on with your recitation then of, of other incidents that have occurred. And, and let me ask you a quick question about November 23rd.
Yes, sir.
Was it determined on that date that the individuals involved in this argument, uh, had been or were patrons of Enigma?
It's my understanding that there was a conversation, um, uh, that they were coming from that location, or it had started there, or they were patrons there, and then the, the argument was in the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you. You may proceed.
I'm on page 104. We have, um, what I believe is issue of over-service or people in the restaurant becoming intoxicated. The three slides following through page 107, again, this is off of, uh, social media, Instagram. These are photographs that were posted, uh, by someone that was associated with the restaurant or there. Uh, but they have captions on there on page 104. Another one bites the dust. Uh, 105, uh, the drinks are no joke. 106, another victim. 107, again, another one bites the dust. Um, they just, there's four pictures of people kind of passed out or sleeping, if you will. Um, and it appears to be dark. I don't know what time of day those were actually captured, but, um, it appears that the patrons are, uh, passing out or sleeping at the location. Um, on page 108 is an email that I received from Captain Hagback that, um, stemmed from the October 19th incident that you'll hear about in a few moments. There was, um, a hotel right next door, the Hyatt Regency, and apparently during that time that they were busy on, I think it ultimately ended up with two or three different calls. They were all working on the October 19th date. Um, uh, there was a report of an intoxicated patron who went into the Hyatt Regency during all the commotion and pulled the fire alarm at, uh, I don't know, 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. Um, that was a drunk patron coming from Enigma. Again, I believe it's over-service and no one's monitoring the consumption of alcohol. 110 is, uh, just to recap of, I believe, some of the citations we issued from our inspection. We have information on page 111 that, um, there, and we have video, um, evidence, not that we need to show it unless you need to see it, but there is a gentleman apparently that was onsite on an event to do live tattooing inside the location. And the DJ is onstage in the video announcing that they are doing live tattooing, um, at Enigma. He specifically uses the word "live tattooing" in "Enigma." And then the video pans to one of the managers at that time, where they're actually getting a tattoo, uh, inside of the restaurant, which is a health code violation. The ad on page 112, again, was from, uh, social media, and that was where they were advertising for that tattoo artist to be there for that event. 113 is the flyer that was promoting the event. Ink My Body was the name of the event, and that was, again, related to doing live tattoos at the establishment. 114 is that video that was in the PowerPoint. Uh, based on the information that I had, I contacted the health department regarding that tattooing that was occurring. Um, I talked to, uh, Mr. Pat Kaufman, uh, and he went later and did an inspection, uh, obviously not finding anything related to tattooing, uh, because we believe it was one-time event at that location. So when he did his inspection, he relayed to me that he didn't find any violations at that time, but it was on a later date.
So if we could, uh, move ahead, I think we've got the idea now of, of what's been going on there. On December 20th...
Yes, sir.
...of 2014.
Yes, sir.
Did something occur at Enigma that resulted in an incident report that's included in this package?
It did. Um, on page 121 is the incident report that, um, again, Ms. Richardson touched on the fact that December 20th was one of the events that they had placed in their packet to be approved by the business license office. It was not approved. Um, but I had officers go out and check the location, um, from Precinct 3 to confirm if it was or was not occurring, and they found that, in fact, it was an event, the doors were open, and there was an event being held at that location in violation of... what was agreed on at the board that day. So they documented it on a police report, and the officer's here that wrote that report, if you would like to hear from him. And then we ended up, on December 24th, Mr. Nguyen came to our office, and he received a citation for violation 78-45 regarding the event that he held that day.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions that I have for Sergeant Smith. We do have three officers here who investigated some of these incidents. In the event that you would like to hear from them, they've taken their time to come here today, if necessary, but again, I don't want to beat a dead horse. If the board has heard enough evidence, then that is certainly fine with me, and I'll certainly give opposing counsel to cross-examine the sergeant if you'd like to. But that concludes my questions at this point.
Thank you, let's hear from Mr. Waste. Sergeant Smith, you'd said that during your inspections of the location, that you did not see evidence of food being served?
Not meals typical of a restaurant setting.
Okay, would you consider wings typical of a meal that people can have?
Sure.
What about shrimp?
If it's served as a meal, I guess it could be, yeah.
And then cheese sticks?
Appetizers.
Okay, so those are things you can have for a meal?
If you want to consume it as a meal. I consider bar-type appetizer food in the setting that we saw it in that night.
Okay, so that's your opinion, is that appetizers are not a meal? Is that what your opinion is?
No, it's not my opinion, it's, it appeared to be what was in the establishment that night.
Okay, but you can see that you can have a meal, wings and cheese sticks and shrimp if you want to, correct?
Sure.
Okay, and we saw pictures you took, right, of food in their facility?
Yes.
Okay. And you serve food in a restaurant, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so there is evidence then that they are operating as a restaurant?
There's evidence that they're serving food at that location, not operating as a restaurant.
And you said that there was a picture that you thought might be inappropriate for anyone watching on TV now of the show, but it was not nudity. Is there a copy of that picture in the book?
There is.
What page are you referring to?
One moment, please. Page 63. And additionally, page 70, 71, I consider those to be throwing gang signs.
Also throwing gang symbols?
Yes, is what it appears to me. And the gentleman on the left side on page 70, the gentleman on the left side of that picture wearing the ball cap is one of the managers at the location.
Would that be Thomas of Milo or Milo Thomas?
No, that's Chris Blasingame.
Blasingame?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He's also depicted in page 71, same photo.
Have you heard the phrase, "do right, you gain success"?
No, I haven't.
Have you seen shirts where they have the initials D-R-U-G-S, which spells drugs, but stands for that phrase?
Not that I'm aware of, I have not.
Okay. And I believe the testimony earlier was that the business license was issued for hours of either 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM, or for regular restaurant hours, which I assume would be closing time of earlier, correct?
Yes, I, my recollection, the reason we went and did the inspection at lunchtime was because he specified he would be open for lunch, and he was not on the date of our inspection in June.
So the, I'm sorry, so the three instances that you referred to, where there are police reports of gunshots and instances on, well, I guess you'd said there were two on October 19, 2014, were the incident, incident one occurred at 2:45 AM, and the other one was at 3:13 AM, correct?
I believe that's what's on the report, yes, sir.
Okay, and then the third instance that you had told us about was on November 23rd, 2014, correct?
I believe that was the date.
And I think you said it was 2:38 AM for that one in November? I think you said 2:30 something AM, I think it was 2:38.
Again, the officers are here to testify, but, I'm sorry, right here, the 19th?
November 23rd.
November 23rd, one moment. 2:38 AM.
Okay, so all three of those instances would have occurred after Enigma had closed, had closed for that, correct?
I don't know if their doors were open or closed.
Do any of those reports indicate that Enigma was open at those times?
I don't know, I'd have to refer to the officers that wrote the report.
Okay, I believe that in my review of the, of the report, which I just got today, was cursory at best, but I don't think it referred to anyone being interviewed inside the Enigma lounge on those dates, which leads me to believe that it was closed at that time, would you agree?
That's an assumption.
Well, if Enigma's being blamed for those instances, then it makes sense that the police would have interviewed someone at Enigma at that time if it was open?
I can't speak to what their involvement or activity was at the time, that's why they're here, sir.
Okay. And I think one of the photos you showed earlier showed a person hired to work security at the facility doing a pat-down search of someone coming into the club, is that correct?
That's correct, that was on June 26th during our inspection.
And that's a good idea, right, have security to make sure people are safe in their facility?
Most restaurants don't have security do pat-downs of patrons walking through the door, sir.
Do you have statistics to show that, that's correct?
How many times have you been patted down going to Red Lobster?
Actually, I'm here to ask you questions, and my question to you is, do you think having security is a good idea or a bad idea?
I think it's a bad idea, depending on the environment.
Mr. Waste, let's be courteous, okay?
I am, I just want to answer the question.
I understand it, but your statement was not courteous, let's be courteous, thank you.
I think it was courteous just asking or answering the questions.
Don't argue with me.
Understood.
Thank you.
So you said, you agree that having security is a good idea, correct?
I don't know the reason to have security.
You don't know why we have police?
That's, that's, we weren't working there, sir, we, the police weren't working there. He has security for a reason, and he would know the reason he would need security. And if, there's also a photograph that shows a picture of a gentleman in a bulletproof vest inside the establishment who are not the police, nor was it security.
So do you agree it's good to, you had to have security or not?
I don't know the reason you would need it in a restaurant.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does the board have any questions of the sergeant? Thank you. Now, Mr. Hensley, you indicated that there were some police officers here to testify concerning the issues or the incidents outlined by the sergeant. At this point, are you going to bring them up individually to discuss that, or you just want to open it for questions from the board?
I'm happy to do whatever the chair's preference is on that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, did, is there any need for the board to talk to the individual officers?
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with the, we have the police reports filed by the officers, and I think, you know, when the applicant's attorney does his questions and everything, if we need to call them back up, then I think the board can do that thing.
Does the board agree with Commissioner's recommendation?
I agree, but I want to thank the officers for a great job they've done in documenting this.
Okay, we'll get to that later.
So-
Please proceed.
That, that concludes my witnesses, if you do not wish to hear from the officers today, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, thank you. So, Mr. Waste, would you present your arguments, please?
And we have no witnesses or evidence to present, Your Honor, or Mr. Lee, but I do want to reserve time to make closing arguments when appropriate.
Okay.
I will waive opening and reserve closing, so you're free to make your closing statement.
Thank you, sir.
Let me begin my remarks by saying that my clients realize that there were some problems in how they ran their business, and have taken steps to change that for the better. But I think it's also important to note that some of the things that are being alleged against my clients are simply not their fault, and not things that should be used against them or held against them, nor should they be punished or sanctioned for those things. Let me get into the specifics that I could. There were instances discussed here about domestic disputes, gunshots in parking lots, and fights going on. A review of the police reports and the notes in the file that have been given indicate to me that those things all happened after club hours when the club was closed. Those are things that should not have happened, we were sorry they happened, but I don't see where there's any kind of connection to where my client's responsible for what someone else did. By the very definition of a domestic dispute that's used in the police reports, that means it's something between a husband and wife, boyfriend, girlfriend, that obviously would have arisen well before they arrived at some location, whether it was our location or some other location, and had a disagreement. I don't think those things are fair to be used as a basis for sanctions or punishments or evoking, suspending a license against my clients. There were some assertions that there's a problem with the visibility, making policing inspections of the facility difficult. This location's on the second floor of the building on that corner of Powers Ferry and Wendy Hill. I would assert that visibility would be difficult from the street of any business in that facility or that location, being on the second floor. However, when they are open, the doors are always open for anyone to go in as they see fit to inspect at any time. So there's no lock door policy preventing police from going into the business while they're open. Obviously, if they're closed, there's no such concern for safety at that time anyway. But I'm not sure I understand the validity of, of a problem that my clients need to be, my clients need to be concerned with concerning visibility of a second-floor location or business. Now, my clients have done some things that were not appropriate, and that was because of the learning curve and their failure to get the proper information ahead of time, and those are the things that led to a lot of the problems they had last summer. Those problems have been corrected. They understand that they cannot do tattooing in the facility, which was a one-time event. They understand now that all employees, whether they serve drinks or not, must be permitted. DJs, security officers, door ladies, those persons, they now understand have to be permitted as well, and that has been done. They understand now that when drink pricings and flyers and marketing materials are issued to try to attract a crowd, they cannot advertise giving away drinks as a prize. Those problems arose from my client's mistake in hiring the wrong marketing people. They basically just handed that off to them and said, "Do your job of bringing a crowd to our facility, our location," and those people were not very good at knowing the rules, and that's where that came from. That problem's been solved as well. Those people who were hired to do those marketing practices have been fired, we now have new management in place, so that problem's been corrected. As far as operating as a restaurant or a nightclub, my clients did serve food, I think the testimony that just ignores the fact they serve food is not genuine. The fact that they didn't keep hours that other facilities keep for serving food, I don't think is relevant. As long as they meet the definition of a restaurant selling 50% of their food compared to drink services, then that would qualify. Now, when they first opened the facility in early 2014, their anticipation was to be able to do 50% sales, that was what their intention was and what they hoped to be able to do. As a new business, it was hard to get business generated, which is true of every business, it takes a while to get the word out, and in their location and with their marketing people they had in place at that time, they began attracting a drinking crowd more than a food-eating crowd, if you will. What my clients are willing to do is to do what's appropriate and needed to satisfy the county's concerns, to change it over into a restaurant category, or from restaurant to nightclub category, but that should be a clerical thing that can be done easily enough, and not something they've done intentionally to try to commit fraud on the county or anyone else. The selling by the package, again, that was something that was done without knowledge of the rules and regulations. They know that now, we have new management in place that will make sure that those things are complied with. After the hearing that was here on December 9th, my clients were involved in miscommunication with their prior attorney, and they were told that they could continue to have the nonprofit events that were scheduled for December, the Toys for Tots event, and the, I guess there was a law firm event on December 20th, as long as they didn't serve alcohol, and it was done during daylight hours. And my clients, that's why they did the event on the December 20th. When the officers got them December 20th and informed them that they should not be doing this, he made a phone call to his attorney at that time, who told him that you cannot do that now. My client didn't understand that that was what the problem was, and shut it down immediately. There was no alcohol served at that event on December 20th. The December 12th event, the Toys for Tots event, did not go off as planned, and they did not engage in the event that was scheduled for, the date escapes me, the one in early January of this year, did not go off either. But the one on December 20th was just a miscommunication, and again, it was a miscommunication that was, I think, minor in nature because there was no alcohol being served, which was, I think, the main purpose of, of what this board wanted to have occur until this could be cleared up. So it wasn't like they were making any money off the event by selling alcohol, but they did shut it down immediately upon being told that that was not, had not been approved. I think we've addressed our responses as best we can to all the concerns of the county. What my clients proposed would be a fair resolution to this would be to recognize the fact that we have new management in place in charge of marketing and running the facility, that we are now marketing to a different crowd. I don't think having security in place is something that should be held against us, I think it should be something we should be applauded for by having security in place. And they now have investors with money available such that they can get current on all the past taxes within the next 15 days. What we would propose would be fair is to continue the, is to continue the status of their licenses, something less than revocation. We would like to see a probation where they can go back into business immediately, begin making money to take care of their financial obligations. As a backup plan, maybe continue this for 30 more days, continue the suspension until we can come back in 30 days, ensure that we have taken care of all the past due taxes, and we will have funds already available at that time as well to pay for the 2015 license fees for the business license and for the alcohol license. Now, that's all I have, thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Hensley?
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, I think we would be hard-pressed to find another individual less qualified to hold an alcohol license in this county than Mr. Nguyen. His own attorney has stood up here and recited a litany of requirements that his client apparently was not aware of or didn't care to inform himself about in running an establishment that sells alcohol. Did not know about the pricing requirements, didn't know who needed to have a work permit in his establishment. Just a blatant disregard for a multitude of code requirements to be in business serving alcohol in this community. There's been a number of incidents, and this testimony has been unrebutted, they offered no testimony. His attorney stood up here and recited some apparent mitigating circumstances, but we've heard no evidence from the licensee himself, no testimony as to what was the cause of all this and what these supposed remedial measures are. So we've got a situation where there has been an absolute disregard, not only of the requirements that he should have known at the beginning, you're not on a learning curve after you get your alcohol license. You're supposed to have already learned what the requirements are for selling alcohol when you apply for the license, and in fact, you have to attest on your application that you've read the code and understand it. None of that was done. In addition to that, the licensee has disregarded the explicit requirements of this board for continuing this hearing in the first place, and held events that were not approved by the business license division, and then said, "Oh, since you caught me, I'm going to close." So my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is twofold. Number one, I would recommend to this board uphold the suspension against the business registration certificate that was levied by the business license division manager, which will buy our code result in a revocation of the business license. In addition, I would recommend that this board revoke the alcohol license, which may not even be in effect, since he hasn't applied for a 2015 license anyway, by automatic action of our statute or our ordinance- By automatic action of our statute or our ordinance rather, that results in a revocation by not having met the deadline to apply for 2015. But if you want to assume that that 2014 license was still in effect due to the continuance of this hearing, I would recommend that this board revoke that license and not allow Mr. Nguyen to serve alcohol at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ott, would you lead our conversation, please? Because this is in your district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First off, I'd like to begin that in other show cause hearings, this board has historically had to look at maybe one or two of the charges that we've seen here. And the board is not in the habit of giving an extra 30 days or a second chance. By my count, there are 28 specific charges covering 15 different code sections that the applicant is listed as being in violation of. First one, sale by package. That's not, it doesn't happen in a bar, it doesn't happen in a restaurant. There are plenty of other businesses on Powers Ferry Road that honor the way the code operates. If you want to sell by package, you operate a retail sales, and if you want to sell by the drink, you operate a bar or restaurant. And I want to talk about the creating a disturbance. In Section 6-106, Number 7, which is cited in the charges and allegations, it says, "Evidence that the conducting of the business creates a disturbance, congregation of intoxicated persons, congregation of underage persons, or consumption of alcohol beverages on the premises by underage persons, or causes the police to answer excessive complaints or make extra surveillance of the premises." It nowhere says that the congregation has to occur in the premises. It says congregation. And this board has heard numerous times in some other cases that repeated times for the police to come out is justification to revoke a license or suspend a business license. And additionally, we have numerous violations of employees and management not having the required license and permits. As Mr. Hensley said, there is no learning curve for someone who gets a license. An alcohol license is not a right, it's a privilege. And along with that privilege goes understanding what the rules are long before the license is issued. The applicant is required to sign an affidavit that they understand. They're supposed to have had proper training. The proper training would have emphasized the fact that all these things are required. I also have problems with free alcohol, more than two drinks to one person, drinking games. Those are not conducive of a properly-run business, whether it be restaurant or bar. Close to this or right in this same building is a normal restaurant that has children and families that frequent it. Also next door, as we heard, is the Hyatt Regency, which has families and children. And there is the reported incident of an intoxicated person coming in and pulling the fire alarm. That gets people out of the hotel, out of their rooms, and outside. We have the shots fired, just totally inappropriate anywhere, but definitely not appropriate where we have children and families. And to have tattoos in the restaurant, I mean, this is not a restaurant. It's not even a bar. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
I make a motion that the board, and it's going to have two parts. Number one, uphold the suspension of the business license by the Business License Division Manager, which will result in the immediate revocation of the business license. Also, make a motion to revoke the alcohol license and not allow this entity to serve alcohol.
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Any comments from the board? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for being here today, and Mr. Hensley as well. Takes us to Tab 7, our second public comment. There are no speakers. Tab 8. Now, I know Item 1 under Tab 8, appointments, has been pulled by the District Commissioner. I would like clarification, or I'd like for our counsel to carry me through Items 2 and 3 as appropriate procedure necessary to move forward on these items.
Item 2 just needs to be announced by the individuals making the appointment, and Item 3 needs to be voted on by the board.
Thank you. Item 2 is appointments by Commissioner Weatherford, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to announce the appointment of Mark Harper to the Home Builder Advisory Board. He will be replacing Bill English, who has served that board previously, and would like to thank him for his service. I also like to appoint Stephen Ellis to the Neighborhood Safety Commission. As many of you know, Steve works in the solicitor's office, and he'd be replacing Carolyn Roddy, and I'd like to, I think, for her service as well. And I'd also like to appoint Tom Ready to the Plumbing Advisory Board, who is replacing Tony Brown, and I'd thank him for his service over the years as well. And my final one, sir, is Dr. Richard Best to the Animal Control Board, who serves, continues to serve. He's a reappointment, and is a veterinarian out in my district in West Cobb. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item 3 is Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, I would like to recommend to the board approval of the appointment of Ms. Karen Traeger to the 1% Special Purpose Local Auction Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee, and Karen will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Chuck Casto, and I would like to thank him for his service and dedication to that board.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? Any comments? Call the question. Motion carries five zero. Thanks, thank you. That takes us to Tab 9, Commissioners' Public Address. Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one announcement, and that's just the continuing Town Hall meetings for the CDBG grant process. The next one is Tuesday, February 17th, at the Vining's Library. And then the other one in District 2 is Tuesday, March 3rd, and that's at the East Marriott Library. For a listing of all the remaining Town Hall meetings, you can go to the county webpage or to my particular webpage.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. I just would like to remind everyone that the 4-H Plant Sale is going on right now, and you can visit cobextension.com to learn more about that or to order plants today, tonight at 6:30 at the Cobb Senior Wellness Center, 1150 Powder Springs Street, will be another SunTrust Park Business Outreach Event, and everyone is invited to attend. And you can go to americanbuilders2017.com to RSVP. My Town Hall meeting, first of this year, will be Thursday, February 19th, at the East Cobb Senior Center, located at 3332 Sandy Plains Road. And the spotlight will be on the Georgia DOT Express Lanes Project. And I hope you can all attend from 6:30 to 8 on February 19th. And just a note for, to please sign up for our newsletters so that you can keep updated on DOT projects and events going on throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd first like to thank the chairman for holding a Town Hall meeting at the North Cobb Senior Center last week. It was well-attended and a great job and a lot of good questions, and I know he's continuing to do that throughout the districts as we move forward. The other announcement that I'd like to make is that the bridge on Nance Road is finally open and complete, which is a joint SLOSS project between the City of Acworth and Cobb County, and that's been long-awaited, and I know a lot of the people are excited about that. So we appreciate DOT working and getting that done, so that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This Thursday, I'll be holding a State of the District address with the South Cobb Rotary, and that will be held at noon on this Thursday, February 12th, at the Ostel Presbyterian Village, located at 2000 East West Connector. That event will also be repeated that same evening at 6:30 PM. That same day, there is another Business Outreach Event for Supplier Diversity Forum, and this will be held in conjunction with the Atlanta Tribune and the Atlanta Braves. And that will be, again, Thursday, February 12th, from 3 to 7 PM, at the 755 Club at Turner Field. I'd like to share that Tap Middle School is now hosting a farmer's market, and that takes place every Tuesday from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM. And for about 20 bucks, you're able to pick a variety of fresh fruits and vegetables. I'd like to thank Community Development and Slant Media, Ms. Angela Presley of AP Advertising for a community engagement party that we had at the South Cobb Recreation Center to encourage people to get involved with the South Cobb Branding Initiative. It was very well-run and very well-attended, and I look forward to the community providing feedback. Yesterday, I had a sobering but encouraging event that I attended at the Orange Hill Baptist Church. It was an event that provided a very touching memorial on the life of a young child, Justin Medina, who's 10 years old. There was a very popular story which ran about a mother who committed suicide and also took the lives of her three children. And her oldest son attended middle school here, and it was a beautiful outpouring of affection for this young child, to see the school and the church and Walton Communities come together to remember his life. The beauty of it all is to see just how many people love this child. This was not a child who was not cared for, not loved by his community, and you can really see light of this child when you looked at his pictures of him and pictures that he drew. And if there's any encouragement I have is to know that for anyone who's in our community, that we have a very strong community that looks out for each other, and I would encourage us to continue to look out for each other because, you know, we all have dary down times in life, and it's been reported that the mother had some mental health issues. And we all can be going through something at some point in time, and it was shared by the minister that sometimes it's difficult to reach out to people when it seems if they're unreachable. But you never know whose life you could be touching and turning in a positive way by reaching out to them, because you just never know what people are experiencing. So again, I want to thank the church for holding that event, the school for your outpouring of support, and also the Boy Scouts was involved in that event. Justin Medina was a Boy Scout at the church, and it was very nice to see the young people there remembering his life. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything further, Mr. County Manager?
Don't say anything, Chair.
Mr. Ott?
You want to announce your Town Hall on the 23rd, because isn't that before our next meeting?
Let me find out here.
Because the signs are up.
Are they really?
Yes.
Let's see here. On, okay, thank you, sir. On February 23rd at 6:30 at East Cobb Library Branch, in cooperation with District 2, we will have a Town Hall. We hope that the community will show up. It's an open forum, open discussion, any item that might be on the mind of the folks in District 2, or as was evident yours, we have folks from Ostel attending. So thank you for the reminder. I appreciate that. Sir? Yeah. You're welcome. Thank you. We are adjourned.